Did you go to Sarah?
No.
When are you gonna go to Sarah?
I thought you were gonna be mad at me.
I might get arrested.
You can't help it though.
I didn't, I didn't ask that. I asked you when you were gonna go to Sarah.
Probably the next meeting. It's in a paper. Wrong. He's saying nineteen million dollars. Okay, that's in the redevelopment.
You had a better job?
I have one simple question. How is that dispersed?
They called me two months after I went back.
The attorney said there's no mechanism.
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that for you, man. Yeah, yeah.
More money and I turned the state police down. I'm ex on now.
I would think that when they, if the actual pilot agreed with that, it spelled out what happened.
Now all my friends now are states.
They were working on the actual pilot.
Well, that's the same. Why aren't we included in that stuff?
Because you don't care. We don't care about you.
That's the mayor's council.
Yeah, it's not us.
See, this statement, that pilot for residential was an appointment. They're saying it's just based on the building. It's not based on the land. The land is tax traditionally. But if you look at your green card, did you get the taxes? My house is assessed double to what the land is. So that's how, we're losing on.
Yeah, well, the land assessments are, land assessments based, it was based on square footage.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, the building is obviously in the area.
All right, it's seven thirty. I'd like to call the June fifteenth planning board meeting in order. Please stand for the salute to the flag. Mr. Thai, will you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Thai. Pat, has this meeting been adequately noticed in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bella. Mr. Hudkavich.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Councilman. Mr. McEnon.
In present.
Mr. Thai.
Here.
Mr. Velosen.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. O'Leary.
Here.
Excuse, he called me.
Dr. Michevich.
Here.
Mr. Sacks.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Leon Cavall.
Here.
No resolutions.
No, no, actually, we do. We have the Town Lake East Homeowners Association. That was that sign.
Right.
Sign variance.
Has everyone received a copy or have gone over that?
Yes.
Are there any changes, additions, deletions? If not, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we accept that.
I need a second. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Can I have a roll call, Pat?
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Hudkavich.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. McEnon was in here. You don't vote. Mr. Thai.
Yes.
Mr. Velosen.
What?
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Dr. Michevich.
Yes.
Sure. Maybe I took you off.
Nice. I'll remember that, Mr. Sacks. Next item, Pat.
Acceptance of the minutes.
Has everyone received the copy of the June first planning board minutes? Are there any corrections, changes, or additions?
Make a motion that we accept them as read.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Thai. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Minutes are accepted. A note on the minutes. There was a question about adding or clarifying statements on the minutes. Our secretary and a borough clerk had a review of the voice recordings. Since a lot of us sit back in the chair and don't talk to the mic, a lot of information is not always accurately transcribed. So if there's gonna be a change, you can add if it's not on the tape. All right, so please note that, that when you're speaking, speak into the mic so that we don't have this issue again.
All right, that, that meeting was, those minutes were tabled. Do we ever?
I know that, Mr. McEnon.
I know, but do we have to file them then?
We did last meeting. The meeting that you were absent from.
I see the method.
Yeah.
We took care of business when you weren't here.
I just think those minutes were inaccurate.
Communication, Pat?
No communication, Jim.
All right. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason we're here tonight, and I apologize for bringing you out this evening. I know it wasn't a scheduled meeting, but tomorrow at two thirty, I will be appearing.
Are we gonna close?
No, we don't have to.
For this?
We don't have to.
To discuss it? It's not final.
No, 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 it's, it's okay. It's, it's because we're just talking about the land use plan, so.
Okay.
That's fine. So anyway, I'll be appearing tomorrow in front of Judge Wilson on the fairness hearing for the proposal, which I know that we've discussed several times over the last few months, and I've given you some, some detail on it. But what you have in front of you this evening is what we believe is the final version that will hopefully be accepted by, by the court and by the special master and by Fair Share Housing, and I'm confident that it will be because it is the result of discussions that both Mr. Leon Cavall and myself have had with Betsy McKenzie, who's the mediator, and the Fair Share Housing attorney. Just as a matter of history on this as well, I also appeared along with Mr. Leon Cavall on Monday evening in front of the Borough Council, and they also reviewed the same report that you have this evening, and they voted to endorse and approve the plan that you have in front of you this evening. And that was one of the preconditions that's required in connection with the fairness hearing. So all we're, all I'm looking for this evening is, all I'm looking for this evening is for you to basically mirror what the Borough Council had done, which is endorse the plan and approve it so that we can proceed forward with the settlement on this. Now, I know that Mr. Leon Cavall has provided you with a chart, which I think is very helpful, which explains, and again, most of these are, in fact, all of these are numbers that we've discussed before, but it sets forth the number of units that are gonna go, are gonna be dedicated for affordable housing at Kaplan Site One, Kaplan Site Two, and it breaks it down into income levels, the Cross Avenue National Lead property, the Luxury Point property, the Chase Partners property, the River Road redevelopment area, the accessory apartments, and then finally several sites that are controlled by the Sayerville Housing Authority and by the borough. The only change that was, that's indicated on this chart, which differs from what we had discussed a few weeks ago, is that after Fair Share Housing really looked into the nitty gritty of our report and I guess looked at their file, or the file that was with COA, they made a determination that some of the credits that we were claiming on one of the prior reports was inaccurate. I think we were claiming one hundred and ninety-five or one hundred and ninety-four credits, and they reduced that to one hundred and fifty-four credits. They were carried over. So what we had to do was add on another forty units somewhere. Obviously, we didn't want to add them on to the Kaplan sites, the Cross Avenue and the National Lead site, the Luxury Point site, the Chase Partners, or the River Road development, redevelopment site, so what we did is we added it on to the borough-controlled properties. Why did we do that? Because again, those are properties that we control. We can determine when those get built. We're not gonna be beholden to a developer who wants to come in front of the planning board or presumably the planning board seeking approval, so that's why we, we put them on that site. The Borough Council was in favor of that when we met with them last week, and I will give you a caveat about all of this, which I think is important, is that there is presently some legislation that may get introduced into the legislature this coming fall, which will deal with one of the issues, which was the gap period. I know our, our Borough Council is endorsing that legislation. That could change these numbers, and whatever number we agree upon is always going to be subject to change if in fact there's subsequent legislation which changes the, the manner in which these numbers are calculated. If the next governor comes in and decides, well, this thing's been a fiasco the way it is now, and determines that there has to be a state agency dealing with this rather than the Superior Court, that's gonna change the numbers. All right, so this is really the maximum number that we're ever gonna have to build over the next fifteen, over the next ten years. So that's my presentation. I know if John wants to add anything, he can, but.
Yeah, if you, if you want, Board, I can just quickly go over the table a little bit, just give you a, a little sense of what these numbers really are generating. And, and really, if you look at the bottom number of seven eighty-five, that number has been in place for a while now because we've agreed on that number, and from that number through the court, we've gotten credits. If you take those red numbers that are in the, the carryover credits from the prior round, those are Lakeview Manor numbers, actually, those one fifty-four that we can get credit for. So we get a credit against the seven eighty-five, and then a credit for rental units. There's a rental bonus of twenty-five percent which we could take advantage of. Taking advantage of those numbers was better than taking the redevelopment credit, which only gave us so many, and, and these gave us significantly more credit. So we did that. So taking the one ninety-five and the one fifty-four, about three fifty-one off that seven eighty-five, that brings us to five eighty-eight, which is our obligation from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five. When I talk about the housing element, that's the first part of the document that you had that generates all the tables. Really, no one has any questions about that, you know, because, and it's based on a two thousand ten census. Prior to that, we had the two thousand census, so that's why that had to be updated. The second part is called the Fair Share Plan. That's what this really is all about, how we break down these numbers and what we have to provide for the next ten years. Within the next seven years, then they'll, they'll start looking at the next ten years, depending upon, as Larry says, what happens with the future legislation of any regulations that are in place or that change and create a whole new set of regulations. There are probably between what's called the substantive rules for COA and the procedural rules, I guess there's about fourteen hundred pages of New Jersey Register regulations, but, you know, it, it's, it's a mouthful, and, you know, if, they'll keep some of those probably, but, you know, they'll probably change a lot of that because a new governor will see it in a new light. So our number breaks down to really that total units, kind of at the bottom third, four thirty-four, and it breaks down into income levels of the units. There has to be fifty-six low, very low income, which is thirty, below thirty percent of median income, low income, which is one sixty-three, and then moderate income, which is two fifteen. That adds the fourth, that's, that's our number for the next ten years. Okay, plus, now, not, that also includes, but we're not including because it's a fait accompli, Luxury Point. That's not gonna go away. That's, that's happening. That actually gave us an entree to the judge where it gave us some credibility where before we, we were not his favorite teacher's pet. So that, that helped, that three hundred, and what we did is we only took a portion of that three hundred in this obligation, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-five, which was one seventy-one. We took a credit, the balance of one twenty-nine. If you deduct three hundred out of one seventy-one, you get one fifty-nine left. That we used as credit in the, in the, the present need, which was two sixty-one, so we got a full credit with a couple of other manipulations and the point of, of one fifty-nine units, so we don't have to build any of those units. Okay? So, so we came out with a deduction of about forty-five percent, which, you know, is, you know, close to half.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I think I mentioned last time, or maybe one of the earlier here meetings, fair shares number were, was probably around thirteen fifty, in that range, so we got a sizable, we negotiated a sizable reduction here, so.
I had a question.
Sure.
Of the four hundred and thirty-four units, what's a unit? Is it a one-bedroom apartment? Is it a three-bedroom townhouse?
Just a unit. Just a number.
It can be a one-bedroom apartment, can be a two-bedroom apartment, can be a three-bedroom apartment. Well, that breaks down in the rules with the, with the very low income, the low, that's why this is one of the things they wanted, what was the breakdown specifically towards the project sites. So this is one of the things we had to break down, and it, it breaks down into the, the housing construction code, but you can have a family unit, which is a, a unit that's not age-restricted. You can have an age-restricted unit, which is over fifty-eight or sixty, depending upon what standard you're using. So we have, and all of those have to break down. There's percentages, minimums, and maximums you can have under the regulation, so we had to make sure that ours balanced out to what you see on this page.
So it's up to the developer when they give us a plan to show what their bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, we have to work with the developer. In the case of Kaplan One and Two, they have to give us, you know, a site plan.
Right.
And then we have to work with them, and they, we have to, they have to commit and confirm what they're doing, and we report that, and it goes down from, you know.
Where's Chase Partners? Where is that?
Chase Partners is what was on Route Thirty-five.
Club Benet.
Club Benet, that area where they're building those now.
Yeah.
There are twenty-two units in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was one I think the planning board had designated for.
And that's in, that was built into the resolution. We didn't have to do anything really there. We just had to present that, actually.
It was age-restricted initially.
Initially, initially.
See, that's, that's a trend.
Yeah.
See, what would be helpful to me, and I mentioned this to John earlier, with this chart, like Kaplan Site One, you're saying we need twenty-six affordable units, but how many total units are gonna be going there?
Yeah, you're gonna have.
All those things. So you're looking at a thousand additional units other than what National Lead is.
You're looking at, what you're looking at, at the four thirty-four number, or the five eighty-eight number, or the seven eighty-five number. That, that is affordable units that the borough has to provide opportunities for. As affordable.
What he's asking, what's the total?
Yeah, the total.
How many do you get to get twenty-six units?
And when it's a rental, when it's a rental project, it's fifteen percent. Okay, so if you divide the numbers up, for instance, with Kaplan, that's one seventy or one seventy-three.
Mike, it's on page one seventeen if you look at his.
Yeah, it's in, it's spelled out in the fair share, the second part of the plan, the Fair Share Plan, it's, which is pages about twelve to twenty-two, it's spelled, that I sent you, I emailed you, it's spelled out in there.
That was changes to what's in here when you emailed.
Yes, that, those were changes that we had to make also. This kind of confirms that and also breaks down the income levels. That's why we need to provide.
From the Board of Ed perspective is, in addition to the Luxury Point of two thousand units, what other amount of units have to be built?
Right, you're talking about.
Exclusively of this.
You gotta look at it like this. There's, for every project which has affordable housing, there's market rate housing, which is regular housing without any restrictions, and there's affordable housing, all right? If it's rental, it's fifteen percent rental, and the rest is market, so that's eighty-five percent market. If it's, for sale housing, it's twenty percent affordable and eighty percent.
Let me, let me rephrase the question.
No, no, I, I know where you're going, and I said, the reason I had to do it this way is before, for the, for the report and for the litigation. What I'll do for you, as I said, is we'll break down those numbers, so you'll see the market rate. We'll, we'll provide it to the board.
Right, for, for the record, other than the Luxury Point, two thousand units, looking at another yet-to-be-built thousand units.
Right, right now, a little less than a thousand.
Okay, and that also.
Probably nine seventy-five.
Doesn't include what still needs to be built in Lemire, and what still needs to be built in Town Lake.
Right, Lemire is.
Now, I need to know numbers of.
Yeah, what you're asking is, is what's to build out of the town?
Yes.
And we don't have that.
Well, we have.
Many would you have that?
We, we, no.
No, we don't know that because we don't know what other possible lands are available for development. Yeah.
But what we do know of what's available for development is on this piece of paper.
Absolutely.
And that's three thousand plus units.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, yeah, and believe me.
I'll get you that information, Mike.
That's three thousand.
Because I got Sarah saying they, they're unaware that our schools are overcrowded.
Well, you gotta tell them.
Yeah, you gotta go and tell them.
Well, I did.
No, you don't. You didn't go, you have to go to their meetings, and, and, and we will come and assist you if you're, if you're too afraid to stand up to, to poor little Sarah.
Afraid is not in my vernacular.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say that.
This is a guy that used to have this finger on the button.
See, the problem, and this is why I asked, I asked this question, is if I look at Eisenhower right now, that school has a capacity of four hundred and eighty-one students. They have five forty-four in there right now.
Yeah, so you're over, right there.
Yeah, and that takes, and that still has Lemire to feed into, you know, so here's the problem. And, and, and if I don't talk about it now, I can't wait till everything's built and then say, what are we gonna do? That's the problem I have.
You know, Mr. McEnon, the problem, though unfortunately, is we cannot take that into consideration for purposes of this litigation.
But the Board of Ed president sits on this board for a reason.
I understand, I understand.
There's a category for this board.
No, I, I understand, and it's, believe me, it's the conundrum that every municipality is facing, because what's happened here is because of the fact that this is now in front of the court system, and you have judges in each county determining how the residential landscape of the state of New Jersey will look over the next ten years and beyond, when that's really not the way it should be.
But towns like Sayville get screwed because, well, Rich Towns did it. They paid neighboring towns to pick up their quota. How's that gonna get fixed with this?
They can't do that anymore.
They can't do it anymore.
They did it.
Yeah, they did, they did.
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that was, that was.
But they did it.
But that was declared invalid even within the last ten, fifteen years. I mean, that was, yeah, that, I mean, I remember, you know, basically Perth Amboy bought everybody's.
Yeah.
Right, I remember.
They got the money.
Right, they got the money.
Because they're an habitist.
Right, right.
We have to raise our taxes here, and then to boot all this, we have to go against a pilot. You, you just, this was, as we say, we're losing altitude and airspeed here pretty quick.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping what's going to happen is that there will be some movement from the legislature in the next session to deal with this issue, or whoever the next governor is is gonna grab it by the horns because this probably is one of the largest catastrophes that's going on in the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Sacks, you're, you're in the know, and I don't question your judgment on this, but I've been sitting on this board now thirteen years, and the legislature's been moving at that pace for the last thirteen years.
Yeah, yeah, well, but I think something will happen.
Look, what happened, COA was on the front burner. This governor got in, and then it was on the back burner until the courts brought it back in. Can only do what we're told. This is the number that we have for the next fifteen years if the next guy doesn't change the piece of paper. That's what I got out of all of this.
It's not sustainable for this town.
Right?
Well. That's your opinion.
It's gonna be a little over the top.
Mike, that's your opinion. You can, they can come in and say, listen, you know, well, you gotta build ten schools, whether you're sustainable or not. You have to, this is the number of units that, that the state wants, and you have to accommodate that. Period. That's it. Bottom line.
And then you say me, you're paying taxpayers in this town.
Yeah, exactly. The school board, the taxpayers. That's what I'm saying.
You understand, John, my concern?
Mike, I've understood your concern from.
No, 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 there's another concern, because these developments here, these Chase Partners, all these Kaplan sites, what prevents them from coming here and saying, hey, you gave a COLA to this, this development?
Pilot, you mean.
Pilot, excuse me, pilot. What, what prevents that from happening?
That's not, there, there is no, there's no answer to that. That's not us. That's the council, mayor and council's decision.
But I think we're all in this together, aren't we?
Yeah, but again, that's the mayor and council's decision.
And we have a councilman that's supposed to be on this board, right?
We've had councilmen on this board a number of times.
There's a reason for that, right?
And what, what have we gotten in the years?
That's my point.
Well, that, I know that's your point, but you're talking to the, to the choir. We all know this, and go to the council meeting, complain to them.
I've been to the council meeting.
Again, go to the coun, that's all I can tell you.
Jay, I've been there, Jay.
You know, I mean, this is, this is gonna be the law of the land, and you have to accommodate.
The last council meeting I went to, they said, yeah, there's nineteen million dollars coming to the school district, but there's no mechanism for us to give you the money. That's what they know.
So. That's not us. I mean, it's not in our authority. Uh, wait, I wanna talk, you wanna talk about a pilot first briefly?
Well, I, I. I'm not sure I could talk about the pilot, because I, I know Mr. McEnon asked me before the meeting to talk about a pilot.
Talk of, just to generally.
How's it work?
Yeah, how's it?
How does it work? Okay, well, a pilot is part of a redevelopment, it's part of a redevelopment approval process. It's, pilot means payment in lieu of taxes, and, and what happens is there's a provision in the, in the New Jersey redevelopment law which permits a developer to make a one-time payment, usually a substantial payment, you know, as part of its redevelopment agreement, to the town, to the borough or township coffers. The question was, from Mr. McEnon before the meeting started, you know, how do, how do we determine, or who has say in how that money is spent and how it ultimately gets to perhaps?
What does that amount is?
Right. Again, not done by the planning board. It's done by, done by two factors. It's done by the redevelopment agency, and it's done by, primarily by the Borough Council. So the planning board has no say in determining the amount of the pilot. But again, it's only specific to a particular redevelopment project, and the terms of that pilot are set forth in the redevelopment agreement.
And how long is the pilot for?
Again, it could, I think it's a maximum of twenty-five years, but it, it could be shorter.
And what happens at the end?
Well, eventually, the, the borough will get all that money, and the town gets all that money, and again, the question is how it's paid. That's a staging process.
So at the end of the pilot program, you're saying that the township will eventually get the tax monies that it would have gotten?
They'll get all of it.
If it was traditionally taxed then.
Correct, correct.
But that's assuming that the development gets built out.
That's always a, that's always a concern, right. Okay, that's always a concern.
How many times does that happen?
It happens.
Yeah, then what?
Anyway, that's, that's, that's about the best I can add on what, what a pilot is, Mr. Chairman.
I wanna end this discussion. I wanna motion open to the public.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Thai, you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Anyone from the public wish to speak? If not, anyone from the public wish to speak? If not, I need a motion to close.
I'll make that motion to close the public.
Thank you, Mr. Thai. Ms. Lee, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business? If not, Mr. Cornell, since you didn't say anything tonight.
Yes, actually, we need a motion to endorse and approve this plan, which the Borough Council endorsed and approved at the last council meeting.
What's the name of the plan?
It's the Land Use Element and Housing Plan. Is that what we're calling it, John?
The Master Plan slash Housing Element and Fair Share Plan.
Right.
Make a motion that we approve the Master Plan, Fair Share Housing and Land Use.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Thai, you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. You're awfully quiet over there now, Mr. Kelly. You've been yakking all night.
I, those are the minutes I, I said a lot about last night.
Can I have a roll call, Pat, please?
You can't win, Ken.
I know. Trying to be an active participant, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Mr. Hudkavich.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. McEnon.
Yes.
Mr. Thai.
A little more affirmed than Mr. McEnon, yes.
Mr. Velosen.
Sure, yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Dr. Michevich.
Yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll report back at the next planning board meeting and let you know where you are.
On August third. You know what? I have a quick question, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna call for adjournment. Fair Share Housing, who the hell are they? How do they get paid? And who decides where they are?
I'm gonna find that out one day, because I have had the same concerns.
I'm willing to bet their attorneys.
Well, no, they, they have attorneys, and I, I've always wondered, who pays these guys, so.
Developers. I mean, you gotta ask these questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure developers, but, but anyway.
You know, if I go tomorrow, that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Wilson and stir the pot a little bit.
Is it your brother-in-law?
Uh, Jay, right, we've canceled the July twentieth meeting already.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Your next meeting is August third.
Next meeting is August third, no meetings in July.
How sad is that?
How sad is that? Uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Thai.
Off for the summer.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
I don't understand how anyone can tell a town.
Aye, aye. How are you meeting adjourned?
Try the summer, folks.
Yeah.
Where you wanna go? Hey, Pat, give me a favor. Sign both of these resolutions.
I couldn't agree more. I don't understand how anyone can come in and tell a town what they can afford or what they can't afford. Right, because it's a circle. You probably did have concerns, and, and everybody should be concerned about that. But at the same time, the law is saying you have to do this, so, so it's like you have to enforce the law.
I did. I wanted to get it over early for you guys.
It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that anyone tells any town how many houses they can and cannot have. You have money, you buy land, you build a house. It's that simple.
Mrs. Patricia.
You on both?
Oh, yeah, you had to let her finish.
Sign that one, and that one you keep here.
I came to say thank you. She did me a favor today. I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, that was a get what you need.
I did.
You had the wrong name. You were calling him Black and instead of Black.
Well, I don't understand anything.
Well, it didn't matter. I talked to him yesterday. I gave him my email address. He wrote it down, which is exactly what I assumed.
Yes, you did.
And when I wrote to him, he said, boy, you guessed right. That was exactly it. I really watched it, so.
So you.
So he sent me what I needed, and then we tried and see if it doesn't work. I'll get back to him again. I wanna put the Nixal widget that we have on our homepage on our website for the community. That would be good.
That would be good.
Well, I have a lot of different links to the Sayerville website, but these people just gotta like shove it in their face.
Otherwise, it's the only run while the development...
I used to have the code red stuff out there, but now that we've changed it, I wanted to put the new one.
That'd be good, yeah. Keep them up to date.
I'm trying to get so old that they don't realize. And I don't care if they do, I just can't be bothered with them anymore, but we keep getting a new product, it's amazing how quickly it turns over.
I bet, scary.
Creepy.
Creepy, that's a better word.
Well, you know, my husband was funny, when we moved there, he says, how are there so many people dying? I said, Roger, did it, did you not realize we moved into an adult community? I said, the odds are...
Yes, it's gonna happen.
It is, and a lot of people just, well, that's why it's a mess.
Really? I just look at dying, you know?
I had, no, some of them did, like, we just had, lost one that she went to a assisted living. So they age out, sometimes they die, sometimes because they wanna go live near their kids, so it's not all sad.
Yeah, it's not all doom and gloom.
Exactly. Thanks, Pat, have a good time.
Okay.
I guess once a property is, I guess once a property is sold, it's released from the pilot.
Yeah, really? It's all right.
It's like the rent is...
Yeah.
It's like any contract. Right, it runs out with the... The patent law, like they negotiated.